Evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to a special joint workshop meeting between the Village of East Dundee's Board of Trustees and the Planning and Zoning and Historic Commission on Thursday, 8/30/2024 at 6:30. Franco, we pick the role.
Sure.
Trustee Mahoney?
Here.
Trustee Britton?
Here.
Trustee Sauter?
Here.
Trustee Saviano is absent. Trustee Trager is absent. Trustee Kuntzey?
Present.
President Lynam?
Here.
Commissioner Prueger is absent. Commissioner Feck?
Here.
Commissioner Reyes-Broder?
Here.
Commissioner Stenick?
Yes.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Here.
Commissioner Myers?
Here.
And Chair Brunner?
Here.
And you're all right to complete the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Thank you. You have to take us to public comments. Is there anyone in the room who would like to just order? I... An agenda or non-agenda item? Say no? Okay. That's going to take us to the other agenda items, which is the joint workshop discussion regarding an initial plan for the Comp Plan, Comprehensive Plan. So, Erica, would you like to introduce?
Sure. So, as you're aware, earlier this year, we approved a contract with NIU to conduct a joint strategic plan slash comprehensive plan process for the village. The last time the comprehensive plan was updated was ten plus years, twenty years ago? So...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Twenty-two years ago. Two thousand and two. I thought there was a slight update at some point, but in any event, it's time to take this on, and we're looking forward to working with the consultants and the boards and the community to put together something that makes sense for the community. So, for that, I think we can introduce our consultants. Please step away.
Good evening. I'm Mim Evans. I'm with the Center for Governmental Studies at NIU, and thank you so much for inviting us into your community to help you with this planning effort. We're really enjoying our time here, getting to know your community better. I'm working tonight. Our team member here?
My name is Todd Benatolak. You'll actually see that Mim and I passed out our business cards, so you can actually see our names if you want to get in contact with us afterwards. Please do so. I'm actually a consultant urban planner. I've been a consultant for about twenty-four years, since two thousand and one. And the reason why I know that is because in two thousand and two, a year into my career, I actually worked on the East Dundee Comprehensive Plan.
You did, huh?
Yes. So, you're like on the knowledge stage. You'll see my name on there. I was a very green, young urban planner back then. So, if you don't like anything in there, you can blame the twenty-five-year-old me. I'm back to full circle to help you out with updating your new plans.
Were you a consultant then, or did you work for TSCA?
I was working with TSCA. I was there for sixteen years. Now I'm a independent consultant. But thank you for having us.
So, we have worked together as a team for, I want to say, four years now, approximately. And we find that we complement each other very well. The Center for Governmental Studies is, or at least I am anyway, an urban planner by training, but my perspective is economic development and community development, whereas Todd's perspective is land planning and...
Land use planning, zoning, housing.
Right. So, between the two of us, we find that we can bring the full spectrum of what you need to do a comprehensive plan, and it's worked out very well on many comprehensive plans that we have done today.
Yeah, we've done half a dozen.
I think it's eight last time.
In my total, correct? I've done close to twenty comprehensive plans and urban land use plans, so getting up to two dozen groups in, so.
So, we have a number of things we want to talk to you about tonight, and the purpose of tonight's meeting is twofold. One is to familiarize you all with the process that we're going to be going through with your community so that you know what to expect along the way, and the other is to get input back from you on what are the things that you want this new plan to accomplish for you and what are the things that we need to be aware of to ensure that they are addressed in the plan as we go forward. So, that... The first thing we wanted to talk about was the fact that there's really three documents that are being prepared for your community. A comprehensive plan, which is the main topic for tonight, a strategic plan, and historic district guidelines. Now, doing all of these plans together is something that we're increasingly seeing. We've done many of them in this kind of a situation where we do them all together, and it's so efficient. It's cost-effective because a lot of the information overlaps. So, rather than coming back and doing one of them a year or two from now and you have to update everything, you can get it all done at once, and it saves you money, certainly saves time. You end up with plans that are well-coordinated. We will actually cross-reference the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan, so as you're looking through and you see a particular objective in one and you wonder how the other one felt about that same thing, it'll tell you exactly where to go. So, it's easy to use them together. And finally, both are better, and they're both better because strategic planning and comprehensive planning take slightly different approaches to gathering input. We get a lot of input directly from the community, and we gather a lot of data. The strategic plan gets a lot of input from elected officials and from staff, and then they also conduct focus groups. So, not doing them together, you don't have as big a wealth of input as you do when you do them at the same time. So, it's always great to do them both together, and we just wanted to lay that out, that actually all of this is happening at the same time, and we think you'll be pleased with the package that you have at the end. That being... These seem to be a little bit out of order. We're getting like every...
Do you have another slide?
Other page.
Could you maybe go to the other poster?
The solution? Otherwise, I do have it on a stick, and we can stick it in there and see if we can do that one.
Does this work?
Yeah. We're pretty agenda-wise. I figured we could skip that. So, let's back up then, and we can even do the agenda. Okay. So, the first thing we're going to do is talk about a little bit of background. We already did that. Then we'll go through the comprehensive plan, what the process is. Then we'll go through the historic district guidelines, exactly what they will entail, and then we turn it over to you to do some work on your part to get us some information. So, that's the way the evening's going to go. We already did that. See where we're headed. All right. Comprehensive plan. Now, some of the things here we have already done too, and it's always nice to talk to a group and be able to say some of these things can already be checked off. We already had the kickoff meeting with staff some time back where we talked about timelines and how we were going to work together and gathered information and all of that, so... And the working relationship has been very good with your staff, so that's been excellent. And we collected and reviewed a number of background materials, other plans that have been done, that sort of thing. So, that's done. Then we get into this village profile, which is where we collect an awful lot of data, and we are in the midst of that. It's not finished yet, but we want to get a picture of everything that it lists up there, but we want to know something about your population and how it's changing. Who lives here? Who might live here in the future? Who works here? Who employs them? What's going on in your housing market? Do you have a tourism-based revenue coming in? Are there big parcels of land that might be developed, or there's a redevelopment possibilities? And we know all this is very true. Franco gave us an excellent tour a while back and was showing us all the properties that have potential to be different shortly than they are right now, properties the city has been taking an active role in. So, it's very exciting, all the things that you folks are thinking about doing here. So, that's in process. And then we come to the public input part, and the public input part is already also in process. I'm going to skip down for a minute and say that many of you might have seen the resident and business surveys that went out some time ago. Those are now closed and we're in the process of compiling all that data, but the response rate was terrific. We had three hundred and seventy households respond to the community survey, and that's really outstanding because this is not that big a community, and that's very good. We're very pleased with that. And we had fifty-eight businesses respond. Again, there are many communities in which we're lucky if we get twenty or thirty. So, fifty-eight is outstanding. So, the level of interest in the community, I think that really speaks well for both the businesses and the residents, that they are willing to take the time and that they care about what's happening here. So, that's pretty exciting. The next thing that we're going to be doing is putting together a comprehensive plan task force. Now, what is this task force? It's a group of residents who have, in this case, volunteered to work with us to actually develop a lot of the content of the plan, and they have several roles. One is we want them to represent a cross-section of the population. So, we try to get people from different walks of life and in different stages of life so that we get an equal balance of opinions about the community. So, that's their first role, is to represent the community, represent their neighbors. Their second is to bring their own expertise because we find that somebody may be a realtor and they really understand what's going on in the housing market, or somebody else is a teacher and really knows what's going on in the schools or whatever. So, the expertise within the task force is great, and that's always such a bonus to be able to tap that kind of expertise. Yes, sir?
Did that task force already get put together?
Ah, you're ahead of me. It's very soon. The third thing that they're going to do, though, is that they are a conduit back into their communities to help provide information to their neighbors, to the people they see and whatever they do in their walks of life, to involve them all in the process as well. Now, the task force. We have developed a list of people who volunteered, and they volunteered through the survey. There was a question on there, if you recall, that asked if you were interested in being on this task force, and quite a few people said that they were. Those people have all been invited to a meeting which is going to be held on June thirteenth. Will be the first time that this task force meets. So, that's when we will begin to work with them. So, yes, there already is a list of people who have said that they'd like to be involved. They haven't begun their work yet. Go ahead, Scott. Did you want to say something, Todd?
No.
Oh, okay. Other things up there? Focus groups. The focus groups will happen in two ways. The strategic plan folks, who are different than Todd and I, will be holding focus groups, and they'll hold focus groups, a resident group, a business group, and a few other groups. I'm not sure exactly which ones they've decided to do. So, there will be some focus groups that they will be holding. And the other thing is if we find that we are short on information from a particular demographic in your community, for example, say, we got very little input from people over the age of sixty-five, say, then we can hold a focus group with that group that's missing so that we can start to collect their information. I think from preliminarily looking at the resident survey, that we did very well and that there is a good representation from all groups, income ages, whatever, so that may not be necessary. But anyway, that's a role focus groups can play. And then there's the project website, which is very important, and Todd put that together. I'm going to turn that over to him to talk about.
Sure. So, before I actually... I'm going to toggle over to kind of give you a run-through of what it looks like, but you can actually see... You can go to this later, and I can... I think it's the time to go up to the building's website, but the URL is tinyurl.com/eastdundee one word dash plans. We can flash that up again later if you didn't get that real... Again, but I'm going to toggle over. I think I have it loaded up on this page. So, this is... So, there's actually a landing... This is a landing page because since we're doing two processes together, we actually might add a third page once the historic district guidelines process is up and running. But right now, the main page is just a landing page so that if you're interested in participating or providing comment on the comprehensive plan, you can click on this link, or if you want to click on the strategic plan, it has a separate link, but I'm just going to go to the comprehensive plan link. So, that will open up to the main page for the comprehensive plan project website, and a lot of it is just kind of a one-stop shop. So, if you're a resident or a business owner or property owner or elected officials, as you all are, and you just want to learn more about the project, you want to know what's upcoming, so you can see here on the right sidebar is tonight's meeting, and then once we have the steering committee meeting, another event, we'll post those as well. Kind of continuing along the right sidebar, there's updates where we announce when the surveys were opened back in April and then when we closed them about a month later and so on. And then there is a general timeline to so people know where we're at in the process. So, as you can see, we're still pretty early in the process with the data collection and community input process. And then, as Mim said, later in June, when the task force starts their work in their first meeting, this will be an active star to show that that's in motion. Your two thousand and two comprehensive plan, there was an amendment to the plan. It wasn't a full update. It was just a partial amendment. Those are both linked as well, so if you want to see what your current plan says, you can definitely do so. You can open those up, and then we have contact information for both Mim and I on the bottom as well. But if we scroll back up, so the main part on the left side gives you a general description of what the comprehensive plan is and ways you can participate. And one way you can participate now is this thing called a comment map. It's basically if I open it up wider, it's basically a Google map. So, you can scroll in. You can actually see someone actually left a comment already. So, you can scroll in like you would on a Google map, and then let's see what this person said. This was from Sharon Bending. Some of you may know Sharon. Sharon says, "I would love to see Hager redeveloped." So, that's the type of comment you can post, and then kind of like Facebook or any social media, you can like or dislike that, which is kind of cool. And people actually really like using this. So, the way that you can do it is just scroll in and out, find a property or an intersection or a street that you want to comment on. For example, at this particular intersection, you say, like, lighting needs to be better or better synchronization of lights or whatever. You just add your marker here, and then once you find a spot, you can just put it right there, and then you can add your comment. Just type it in, your name. You can leave your real name. Some people leave fake names, Mickey Mouse, whatever. Email's not required, and if there's a photo that you think might be helpful to reinforce your point, you can add that, but we won't do that here. And then once you're ready, you can press submit, and you can add as many comments as you like. And there was the older version of this, you could actually comment under other people's comments. I don't know why they removed that feature, so I wish they added it back. So, that was a kind of a nice feature, but the fact that you can actually like or dislike, that's, I guess, helpful so you know you can reinforce a comment, whether you like it or dislike it. So, that's kind of nice. So, that's one way that you can participate, and the nice thing is that you can do this on your laptop, your desktop. You can do it on your phone. If you have an iPad or tablet, you can do it on there. So, it's really interactive. It's a really great way for people, if they're not inclined to go to a public meeting, they can just go to the website at any time of day and post their comments. We actually found that during the height of the pandemic, people really, really were engaged in stuff like this because obviously there was a lot where we couldn't do a lot of in-person, but a lot of the stuff that we learned carried over where we can do in-person things now, but people still like to interact online just because of various reasons. So, having this feature on the project website is really helpful so that people can continue to engage or provide comment even if they don't go to any single meeting. So, that's always nice.
I like the transparency of it, so you can see what other people's... Once it gets populated, you're going to be able to see what other people are thinking and...
Exactly. And we keep that up throughout the process. The survey was open and closed within about a month. We actually keep this open throughout most of the process. We may close it eventually, but we just, since this was pretty early on, we'll keep it open as long as we can. And the fact that this project website is linked to your city website, and I think it's been promoted on social media as well, that will hopefully help boost people to add the comments. So, any questions on that? And then if you want to go back to the main page, you can click there, and then I'll just quickly show you the strategic plan page. It's different just because the process is different. The description tells you what goes into the strategic plan and then how they go through their process of the strategic planning model that NIU uses. And then the timeline you can see is different, but the thing is that our plans are actually concurrent. They actually occur at the same time. We do have things that overlap, but even though the timelines and then the actual phases are different, we actually start and end around the same time. So, that's one of the nice things about, as Mim said, doing these together is that we can do a lot of things simultaneously and kind of have that same start, same end, same start and endpoints as well. And you can actually see that your last strategic plan was two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-four. You usually update those every five years as well. Any questions on the website?
Just really quickly. I know that you gave us the tiny URL. Is it connected to our village page?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we post that somewhere like on the main homepage or something if it's not already? Can we like do a little announcement blurb just so it's out there when we post this meeting minutes?
Sure.
Thank you.
And then if you want to try that again?
Yeah. I've got the slide. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Well, from a survey standpoint, how involved would it be? And when you mentioned that you thought fifty-eight responses from the commercials end of it was really good, I find it a little troubling given the number of businesses that we have. I'm wondering if our response would have been higher, if everybody had been made aware of this survey, and wondering if it were.
This...
And we have far more than fifty-eight businesses.
Yes.
I think they probably have something to say. And I don't know, you know, sure knocking on everybody's door. I'm just wondering if maybe they would have responded had they known.
Well, we used the business list that the city provided for us, and it was sent out to everybody, and reminders were sent to everybody.
We sent them off to all the different businesses.
So, they should have all seen it. The other opportunity, as I mentioned, there probably will be a business focus group, so there will be another opportunity for a smaller, small number. A focus group is not a tremendous number of people, but it is more input on the business side of it. And then we do have people in the task force. I know at least one or two is a local business, are local business owners, so there will be some input there. So, I feel like there will be business input into the process. Yes, you have a lot of businesses, and I will tell you upfront that the businesses that respond, and I haven't looked at yours, so I can't say for sure yet, but generally we get the smaller businesses that will take the time. They are the ones that take an interest in things like local comprehensive plans, whereas you have something, a big corporation that is owned remotely, you know, somewhere out of state or whatever, they're not going to have the interest to take the time to do a local survey. So, we do tend to get more of the smaller businesses and the bigger ones that participate, but really fifty-eight is pretty good.
That's like twenty-five or thirty percent if we have two hundred and thirty-eight businesses listed on our website. Better than the residential side.
Well, no. The residential side, it's based on the number of households, not the population. So, actually, it's quite good, the residential side. I think you might have like thirteen hundred households or something like that.
Twelve, fifteen, something like that.
Yeah. So, it's really very good. The response rate was very good. If there are... On the other hand, if there are particular people in the business community that you think it's important to have them involved in the process, we can either invite them to be on the task force or we can have, set up a personal interview with them to get their thoughts in that way. So, please pass along the names and contact information if there is somebody who you think is critical to talk to.
No one specific. I'm just curious.
Okay.
We'll all...
Yeah. Well, if you do think of somebody. Another possibility, it's a little more difficult because your chamber is an area-wide chamber, not one specific, but sometimes the chamber can put out information or have us come to a meeting or whatever, and we can get some input that way. Like I said, I'm not sure whether or not that's a good vehicle to use here or not, but that is another possibility to get some business input. So, if you have thoughts or ideas, let me know.
Is there a requirement for people to comment on this map that they're from a local business or residence, or it could be anyone in the area?
Could be anyone.
Anyone.
Yeah. You can be anonymous. Like Sharon's, Sharon Walling. I assume that's her.
It is her, really. Well...
Are joking ones weeded out?
That's a good point.
I assume there's some coming. Really good question. So, there is a feature where they actually do look at all the comments to weed out if there's anything that's... What's the word I'm using for? All right. So, we're picking up and putting down. Yeah. Yeah. Something that's not, shouldn't be up there, like swear words. If someone posts a photo, there's... Make sure they filter out anything that's not... I'm blanking on the word to use. Inappropriate, yes. But it'll also flag words that... They're really nice. It's actually really sensitive. So, like if someone says, "This development will kill traffic," that word "kill" will actually be flagged, even if the word "kill" is not, is used in a different term, but that's, that just shows how powerful that filter is, and then it'll get sent to me, and then I'll, I can say like, "Oh, this is fine. It's appropriate." Or if it's a public attack against me, anyone, a public official or followers of it, and so on, that also gets flagged as well. Cool. Yeah. There are a lot of details to do.
I would think that's why they eliminated the opportunity to...
Send that to Facebook. They're moderating.
As I heard someone be talking about making sure that that's on the city website and all that, it really is important to push out that that website is there, or that comment map can get... I think we've had like over a thousand in some communities, comments on it. It can be huge, or it can be three or four because nobody went. So, it really all depends on how people know, you know, how many people know that it's there and keep pushing it, that it's out there, and give them to give it a shot.
So, next, in the process of what goes into a comprehensive plan, so land planning is actually one of the major pieces. Anytime someone thinks of a comprehensive plan, they feature land use plan, whether you're a property owner or developer or a business owner, that's usually one of the first things that you look at is that map. So, that land use planning map and land use planning in general is a core piece of what the comprehensive plan is. So, we do a lot of things in terms of our research that we're doing right now is looking at a lot of the data. CMAP has a lot of great data. That's the Regional Planning Agency. We look at the counties to make sure that we have any relevant information from them, and we look at comparable communities as well and then emerging practices in urban planning to look at, especially looking at things about housing and sustainability, the way we use office spaces has evolved, especially since the pandemic. So, a lot of that goes into what we do for land use planning and just kind of planning for economic development in communities as well. Second column, looking at vision, goals, and objectives. This is one thing that we do along with the task forces. They help us really define what a vision statement and then also your goals and objectives. So, I think it's around meeting two or three where we start digging into that vision and goals and objectives, and the fact that that comes from the task force and they really help us understand what's important to them, and they actually even, when we get to the objectives part, they actually help us prioritize those so we know what's a high priority for your community. And then everything has a priority. It's just some are higher and some are lower. So, even if it's lower, it doesn't mean that it's not important. It's just you have to, there's some things that have to come first or are higher. So, that's a really important part of the process as well. And then moving along to the last two blocks, kind of related to land use. We do look at your existing land use to make sure we know what's looking, looks, what it looks like on the ground today. We all look at your zoning map. You actually can see the zoning map on your wall in the back, so that really helps us understand how the relationship between those. And then the last column, design guidelines. We do have a pretty standard set of design guidelines that we like to incorporate into your comprehensive plan. Usually, it's pretty basic because oftentimes communities like to get more detail with the Usually it's pretty basic because oftentimes communities like to get more detailed with the design guidelines and usually that's a separate process. But for a comprehensive plan, there are certain standards that we like to hit so that you know, like, if someone opens up the comprehensive plan, they kind of know what, from a design perspective, what you're looking for, like really high quality materials, heights of buildings and so on. So that's the type of stuff that you'll look for there. And then I'll actually get into the historic district guidelines in a few seconds. On the last slide we have for this part of the comprehensive plan is the implementation plan. So at the very end of the process, once we go through the process of talking, identifying all the goals and objectives and under those objectives, there's, we recommend strategies for different categories of the different chapters or the different topics that we cover in the, in the plan. So it's land use and development, housing, transportation, community design, we often talk about communications, especially how you communicate to your, your community. And sustainability is another one. There might be a few others that we touch upon. But once we get to that phase, again, it's basically a list of strategies. And then we also assign resources so that when your staff is looking at the comprehensive plan and they're looking at the implementation plan, if it says that they know certain resources to go to. So if they don't know where to get started, we provide them with kind of that first step. And in the communities that Nima and I have worked at, some of their staff has found that that piece of the implementation implementation plan to be very critical to them because sometimes when you're opening up a plan, you don't know where to start. But when we kind of tell you like, this is a resource that you should check out or a case study that really does it well. It really kind of gets people started. And it's really, we find that it's really helpful to community staff when they, when they get to that point. And then the second column is just your, the role of you as the board of trustees and also the PZHC. You'll be involved like you are right now. And it's actually kind of rare that you all get involved early. We're really happy to see that you're involved at the very beginning. Because the last thing we want to do as the consultants leading this is that you see this at the very end and you're like, well, we didn't see this. You should have been involved earlier. So we're really happy to see you involved, kind of one of the first people we're talking to. So that's really nice to see. We want to make sure that you're involved at various points as well. So we'll communicate with Franco and your staff about where it makes sense to plug in, whether we present interim processes with you or interim deliverables with you at different points, but we can get to that point when we get there. That's it for the comprehensive plan before we get to district guidelines. Any questions? And then the last piece before we get into kind of a group conversation is your historic district guidelines. You'll actually see the map here in green, that's your historic district as it is today. You actually do have a certain, a certain level of guidelines. So when people are proposing ideas about the district and what they want to do with their property. You do have some things to go on, but a lot of communities have kind of a full set of district guidelines that will kind of give them a lot more to kind of build a strong case for you as a village. So that when some provide an application, you have more information to go on to either approve or deny an application. And there's different reasons to do that, I'll actually get to into that in the next slide. And one thing that we like to do, especially the historic district guidelines have actually evolved over time as well. There's actually one thing that we like to do is look at to see what other municipalities have done in the region, especially looking at peer communities, you and the Fox Valley region, there's other communities that have done it quite well as well. So we'll take a look at those. But also make sure that we integrate very unique aspects that we study in those historic district guidelines because there are definitely unique things, aspects that should be incorporated in your own guidelines as well.
So have you seen situations where with any other town that would have historic guidelines documented that you came in and found no changes or room for no changes? Situations that were as they are, surprise?
I just recently finished Aurora, their downtown, their downtown district guidelines. They actually didn't update, the last time they updated theirs was two thousand and eight. So we just updated it roughly sixteen years later. And there was actually a lot there that they needed to update. There is a lot of things that stayed the same because historic districts, you want to keep the same technically. But there are other things that you want to incorporate because the way we use buildings and land has changed. One really good example is that restaurants and buildings, especially restaurants, they like to have, you'll see like the glass garage door and it's kind of a, they can move up and down for like outdoor dining. A lot of downtowns have that, but in a historic district, that can actually be quite different because if it's not on a historic building already, how do you handle that? So that's one thing that we introduced for them is we looked at best practices, what other communities have done. They incorporated that. So there, there is probably a lot of things that probably won't change because as a historic district, things shouldn't change. But there are things like just best practices in terms of there might be, or just to strengthen what you have. You might just want to modernize or strengthen those as well. So it may not be like leaps and bounds changes, but it'll be changes that really just provide more strength so that when you do get applications, you have to build a strong case to protect you as a village and protect the owners of those properties because they have value as historic properties. Oh, yes.
Is that map accurate?
This was from the website. It may have, I'm not, we can double check that, but that's something that we'll also do is if it needs to be updated.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it looks, it looks like the portion of this building we're in is in it. But if you go to the south end of the building, it would not be in it. And then, so the Hager property, the Hager Pottery property is not in the district. Not on that, according to that map.
Yeah.
Is it and should it be added?
Ted?
I don't think we want to add it to it either.
Well, yeah, it's a current issue maybe, but as soon as this building is raised, it kind of, all bets are off on that, so.
Yeah, and that's something that we'll, that they go through, like in Aurora, they actually had, we actually had a removal lot because over time, it was becoming, the development that wanted being on that lot over sixteen years wanted to be too modern. And then the guidelines were applied to it anyway, so they decided to just take it out and move it to another district. So, but yeah, updating that map is no problem.
You know, we definitely have in the code how to add new blocks to, you know, and houses can apply to, you know, to get into it if they want to follow it. I don't know as much coming out, but definitely having a picture, I know our ordinance right now has no picture. It has the most convoluted textual description. I start reading it and I have no idea what it's describing.
Started trying to draw a map and you gave up.
No, it's all like the block numbers.
Third corner.
I mean, you'd have to probably-
Oh, legal description.
Yes.
That's required.
Yeah, 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 but if somebody could read that and make the map, that would be great.
More to meet some bones.
Yeah, it's like the middle of this road and like it's-
Joe Vance can read it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if we update your map, I would have to work with your legal counsel because I couldn't write that.
Okay.
Quick questions, any other thoughts on either the map or just generally about the district? So reasons why you would create a just guidelines for your district, one is protect the physical attributes, the historical attributes as well of the property and also the economic value for those property owners as well. And then also, it's a really good way to revitalize your historic district or your, in this case, it kind of coincides with your downtown as well and some of your neighborhoods, is to revitalize certain parts that maybe just need a little bit of upkeep or maybe some increased business activity. But another thing why you want to kind of modernize your guidelines is to protect those properties as well. So even though properties are, you're thinking they're, oh, I'm just improving my property. But they, there could be, could be improvements or things that they do that impact other properties or they don't realize that they're actually detracting from that historic value. So we want to make sure that your guidelines covers that and takes the investment that you have in your historic district. But also as kind of relating to revitalization is that it actually can increase your tax base as well. As I said earlier, like that example of the restaurants where people have that kind of like mobile garage door that can go open and close for outdoor dining. Stuff like that is attractive, but it could also increase your tax base in terms of maybe creating more opportunities for business and so on. So there's different reasons why the guidelines will help you in all those aspects. In terms of what actually, what the guidelines cover, kind of going down the list, you want to, the first two are about, the first one's about existing structures, so maintaining and alterations to that. Second one is if you are, if you do have any empty lots or lots that maybe relate to demolition that need to come down, what types of things can you do in terms of adding to a structure or building a new structure? Demolition is actually real important, especially in historic district because demolition is often the last resort that you want to get to in historic districts. So really kind of tie down the standards so that it's kind of like you have to hit these points before demolition really becomes a option for any property owner. So you want to really tie those down so that it's solid for you to have if an application comes for demolition. Other things we like at signage and then it's guys for site setting, that's in a fancy word for kind of like the physical attributes of a site. Some things like fences, walls, parking, landscaping, barrier, barrier of the accessibility is actually one of those things that has emerged, especially being ADA compliant, but also making sure that sometimes universal design is kind of a complement to ADA accessibility so that people of different physical abilities can use the historic district and access it freely and equitably. And then things like art displays, seasonal decorations, how do you handle that in a historic district? Because they're nice during the holidays, but some people feel like they could attract from historic, the historic value of the district as well. So finding that nice balance. And then on the right side, guidelines for public improvements, whether that's street furniture or other street pick features, sidewalks and trails. That's a lot to Aurora Riverfront was actually really important to them because they're also on the Fox River. Public clauses and other shared spaces, how do you handle that in a historic district? Because you do have individual historic properties, but if you're bringing in people from the public to enjoy that space, how do you handle those public spaces and shared spaces for people to do? And other things that could be handled are things like bridges, bi docks and so on. Those may not be as relevant here, kind of depending on whether they're located in your district. But those are kind of like the unique aspects that we would cover. And then the last part is administrative stuff. One thing that Franco did mention to me was your certificate for appropriateness. The COAs are actually really important when you're, when anytime someone is applying for in your historic district, that those COAs are administered properly. So you want to make sure that those are modernized as well in that process.
So can I ask, did you find in our instance or any instance in our situation where historical guidelines or changes, for instance, the site, the stones or public improvements are not supported by ordinance? It should be?
I haven't gotten any deep into your, what you have right now, but I'm not-
Because we've got a structure.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the ordinances that we have need updating.
Correct.
So we can go ahead and put together this great guideline plan and everything, but if something isn't supported by ordinance and should be or vice versa, we were kind of chasing our tail.
Yeah.
We need to know that.
Correct. I mean, when they were written, they probably made sense. Like in Aurora, they had fire escapes that were actually on the front of buildings. And back then, that's how fire escapes were built. But now we put them on the side or over here, fire escapes are built differently. They're not that zigzag metal staircase, they're just staircases inside the building. So the way that code was written earlier makes sense, but now again, modernizing and making sure it makes sense. Any other questions?
Would this, would this include a, like a best practice if you're determining what is a historic building or which visual attributes or which era? Like in our downtown, you could say, oh, it's historic because it matches that building, but it's really from the fifties where the best architectural styles are from the late eighteen hundreds. Or would this identify like these are the attributes that would make it historic? If you're building a new building to try to match the historic value of your downtown, what you should shoot for?
There are, I guess it's a kind of a two-part response. One is some historic district guidelines in other municipalities do kind of go into that kind of architectural study as to like what is, how did East Dundee grow over the decades and the different styles of architecture? I can talk to that with your staff and see if that's the level of detail we want to get to. But the other thing is, the other kind of half of that response is you can't have standards in there saying like, if someone adds to their building, adds to their property or builds something next to a historic property, they might have to mimic certain things, certain aspects as well. Understanding that it's going to, it's going to stick out as a more modern building, but maybe the height has to be the same or the, where the, the building entrances have to be flush with each other. So that one's not like things right on the street, one's like twenty feet back. And so that there's kind of an evenness to that. So standards like that kind of helps. They may not match up textually just because they were built in different eras, but you want to make sure that you honor the kind of historic aspect and character of your, of your district. So standards like that will help.
And it's more if you're renovating a building, whatever era it was built in is what you're trying to target, not switching it to another era to another building around. Is that generally how it works?
Yeah, like if someone were to say like, we need to weatherproof our windows or our doors on a historic building. I know in Aurora, we tried to say like, you have to match as close as possible what you can. But obviously if you're, you bought your windows in the nineteen twenties, you're going to have to find something that closely matches it, but also kind of maintains that, that ability to be more sustainable. And also weatherproofing because historic properties have to be weatherproofed just because it protects those buildings from winter and so on. So there's, yeah, again, the balance of being modern, but also kind of honoring, protecting historic qualities. This is the most I've talked about history in a long time. Any other questions or likes before? There might be one slide. Oh, and in terms of your historic district guidelines, it will actually be a standalone document, even though we're going to do it concurrently with your comprehensive plan and strategic plan. And we're also going to update your zoning code. It'll actually be its own document just because if you, you want to have it being a standalone. That way, if you want to update your guidelines, you're not forced to update all the other things. And that's standard practice, I just wanted to put that out.
So when you see then us having this guideline and then to, I think that's a lightest point, then we would use that as like direction for changing our ordinances to match what was outlined in the, in the guidelines?
Correct, yeah. So usually when you do your comprehensive plan and I guess now with historic district guidelines, once those are approved, often terms, the next, your first implementation step is to update your zoning code to make sure that they're all consistent with each other.
Does any venue of our ordinances allow, the PNC has basically say, if you will, over a lot of the application of historical rules and guidelines. Do you guys have, I mean, the ability then to make changes? We implement this? I mean, can that be done? Is that something that would have to be done from an ordinance?
What type of changes?
Whatever you came up with, if you, some-
You mean changing, changing the standards? Changing the standards?
Yeah.
I wouldn't think so because I'm assuming the village board is going to adopt and accept this plan in an ordinance and that ordinance would stand, so you guys would have to change it.
No, I get that, but I'm just thinking maybe the next PNC down the road or the next board, if they decided they took a look through this and had found things they didn't like, would that, would they have the power to go ahead and make those changes without, or only if they petitioned you guys, petitioned whoever the village board is at that time and they, they approved it?
Yeah, they can, any future boards and commissions can update anything, the comprehensive plan. Strategic plan to some extent and the zoning code, or any of your notices, those can be updated almost at any time, but they have to go through kind of rigorous process before. They just can't like say like, we don't like these, let's get rid of them. It has to go, you have to approve it of us.
Right, because the application of it rests with the zoning commission.
Correct.
Without necessarily having to get approved from the village board. So changes to that be allowed as well.
They would have to rise up saying, you recommend expressly changes to you as a loading board and then you would have to prove it and then that would have to be passed by the ordinance.
All right, cool.
Yeah.
Red screen. So the next thing, now you're all going to get to work. Obviously, your questions have been very good. You don't really need to get some quick questions. What we want to do now is get some input from all of you. So we've got a number of these big maps. And what we're going to do is just kind of maybe one over here and one down there and maybe one on that side also. And have you gather around the one that is closest to you, we have some markers. And we want you to just mark them up with comments also. Please write in what, why you're circling a particular area. Places that either are important to make sure we maintain, like, you know, this is a fantastic building, whatever happens, we want to keep that there. Or problem areas, this intersection has poor visibility or this lot is an eyesore or this is a great opportunity to build something here. Just mark up these maps as much as you can and make sure you put the notes on so that we know when we get back, why you did this. And then we're going to talk about them. So take a little bit of time, mark these up, and then we want to discuss what to put there and any other issues that didn't end up on that.
We thought you were just going to be able to-
You're going to look pretty.
I didn't know we'd get markers. It's great. I brought my own markers. Great.
We can use this, can we use this to hold it open?
So we can use this, can we use this to hold it open?
Do we still update access?
Yeah.
Well, we got it.
It's what it is.
What are you looking for?
That's, yeah, the basement right there.
Brandon, are you gonna join us?
Well, here. I don't know. It's about, did you guys come by the?
No.
This is healing right at the edge.
Yeah, he's serious with us.
This is all for the town as well.
Yeah, that's like the gap gun thing. Well, no, that's the gap gun thing. What's this? That's the glory.
This is, this is, this is all, this is kind of, this is kind of, this is all.
Well, this is healing. Yeah. Yeah, glory.
Sure.
This is what they can look next door that they might develop.
Okay, this is that falcon thing, concrete.
This is just.
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm talking about?
Unfortunately, that's.
No, it's the one that. Goes down, you can't really see.
Currently, this is all uncorporated, right? But eventually it will hopefully end up in town. I didn't realize this much of the property is property.
Everything though is like the east of, along the way Beverly Road to.
Yeah. We were just listening to some of that stuff. Okay.
It's already.
Okay, great.
So all the way to Beverly Road is just.
It's up here.
Uncorporated, county. But the conversation is where Cody is, their intention is to, so the village is technically, the village has a building, which just.
Never mind on that one.
It would be wonderful.
So just from this side, put like the, like in your office, yeah. And then just say.
Of course, the village has a building. It should make this more. Much better off.
I think they wanted to make it.
Make the.
Little sub in the next church.
This, oh, yeah. This is, this is. Nobody's going to build this.
Right by this.
No, this is, this is. This is what the village for. Nine years ago, they had this new song.
Oh, they get the old one. So is that a point, that's when the.
I wish. It's. The yellow one. So is that a lock case? Is that a lock case? There's nothing. No, I know. It's inside, it's just beautiful, structural, but it's gonna stay right there.
It's a sliver of.
I wish I could probably say please.
Yeah. Well, this is. This is that little. That's. That's. That's.
This is dangerous, dangerous stuff. Oh, wow. Oh, I wonder why.
Yeah, yeah. Also too. Okay. There's too much. Right there.
Guys, it's. Yes. Yes. So. There's. I don't know if it's gonna be. Oh, I would. Village.
We're talking about river.
Yeah. Yeah, all of them, all of them. I still wish. Yeah. 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 Is it? Church, right? This is the school also.
This is. Is obviously largely.
Yeah. Put your, put your notes down so that we remember what it was and each. It's sort of already. It's kind of having paths, official. It's interesting because. I mean, I still think that's valid, it's just a sort of making this better for the intersection, I think is more. Yes, yes. But then like, the kind of point is that if you were to do something here, this is like a better. Visibility. No, because that's sort of intersection. That's not, I mean, it kind of is here, it's like, but it's oddly, it's like a small and it's awkward.
And maybe bring it into the.
It's kind of like that painter sign, it's like right here, here, you always have your own option.
So when you develop like, like building materials.
It was like here.
No, down here too.
Or, or here, you know, in this area, like they're all mostly single family or one acre flats. So I would just see like five, I would only do eight. Yeah, so I guess you say, um, conserve souls.
I just. Well, I mean, like. Like, is that part of the. Is this a. Right. It's not so. Right. Right. I was, I was like. Absolutely. Yeah. I don't know. Yeah. I mean. Yeah. I don't know. Yeah. I mean. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Yeah. Just. Yeah. You got. I think it makes the most sense. We got the pixel part of the downtown part of it, but let the. You know. Some sort of statement. I see, I'm gonna. It's great for. it, service. But this is just, this is great for business. I. Yeah. I can't tell you that with the downtown. Yeah. You know, we got a pretty decent site over there, but we could put in, you know, something to let people know that it's, you know, it's not me, you're Japanese. Yeah. 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 Charmed. Yeah. It's like charming. So I think of this as like, where do you get it? Flowers, like where you're gonna make, things that are possible, like some. And. Yeah. Right to the root all right here. Exactly. So they. Oh, no, we do that. Yeah, we do, we walk my dogs, walk my dogs. Oh, okay. Go up this and then come that way. Okay. If not. You're so good at saying this. Yeah, I know, I, I only know. Yeah. 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 I guess what's interesting, this side, this side, we have it, right, it's all, that's over and slow. This is all. So to there, definitely maybe just have this one, and then maybe, I think it's really nice to have it ringed up through the business. Then. Yeah. Here, you know, like, here, it's just to talk about historical, not actually more research about what you can do with how your business is working, you have to deal with that. I'd like this to be part of the, open the, or, or types of. Yeah. 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 If we could. Oh, yeah. It's, it's. It's. Yeah. Yeah, you know, a bell house right now or something. This is. Yeah, just some of the things that I could. I think it's big, if you look at, like, the way our flood manager set up, like, a lot of this down here is all one, right, and we can't really develop it. Or it's, you know, kind of seeing how like, challenges with that, like, where we have, well, you put in a brick study. Yeah, well, it's like if you want to build buildings, you know, you have to have insurance, you know, and. And it's. Especially when they mark. I guess I'm. Yeah. Or we would have to fill this whole basement with, you know, so that's the type of stuff that I would deal with that. Yeah. 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 Yeah, or, or suit it, like, crazy, you know, breaks. Yeah, so we can't be like fours. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's this. The way I'm starting to think of it, you know, where should the bulk of it be developed? Right. You know, everybody likes. Parts of places where we tear. Yeah. Come on. You know. Okay. Yeah, my favorite is that it's pretty big. Heads down. Scans down. Yeah, that's me still. What we're gonna do is we're gonna put three of them up here so everybody can see, and catch them under the wall, and then we can come up. Oh, no, 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 please do. Slappy. Our switch is highest. A lot of writing. With great hem and chip. On that? Yeah. 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 We save, we save some money. Oh, man, who has perfect handwriting? Oh, the architect? New York. Oh, yeah, I'll take that. Okay, why don't we start with this one, that you guys over here? So does one of you from that group want to come up and describe what we've got on here, and then people want to comment, read it, read it, or whatever? We don't like syrup, we don't like syrup. I love my. I just want to talk about. I mean, it's gonna be hard for these people to see, some of these. I think you should. We got it. There's an idea. We thought about incorporating from Barrington, uh, at the river to out at, on Long Round 68, a protected bike lane that we can get, uh, right through town, uh, east of west. Uh, we have.
Uh, we have questions about why all of our truck parking is known residential.
I know you have an answer. I think that, that part is, pretty much is a lake, a lot of that is the lake.
Some of it, we Googled it, and there's a little.
And he's got a house on it.
There are handfuls of spots we marked on here that pretty much are, why is this zone the way it's zoned? Yeah. All the question marks. Yeah, all the question marks, we don't understand the zoning.
You know, we made a note about implementing a riverfront plan that we've already approved. Uh, we could call it the hangar pottery. Um, we didn't get to talk about, you know, restrict around seventy-two also. Downtown. Uh, we have a note to, you know, try and shoot for a walkable fifteen-minute type city.
We learned about that at the IML conference. Yes. Yeah, that was a good one. Yeah, right?
We wrote charming downtown entry.
Ah, I liked it.
Yeah, like to make the zone of right when you get into downtown, like, maybe as different auto dealerships along the entry, uh, kinda expired and move them towards the auto area where we have car dealerships.
Yeah, kind of shift those, you know, the mechanics and the, and all the car dealerships and things like that, not kicking anybody out. I want to state this very clearly because it gets misconstrued, but just as they leave or are coming up or trying to sell, we just look at moving those folks maybe out to twenty-five as the place where all these dealerships and mechanics and things like that are. So that we can expand what constitutes downtown up seventy-two a little bit, especially if we can make that little park happen.
See, and that's the other thing I'm wondering if we can establish through ordinance, you know, we got, it's kind of similar to our, our liquor ordinances that have the license follows the proprietor rather than the establishment. So in the event that someone were ever to sell the business, it doesn't necessarily remain a liquor establishment, the license for the liquor serving doesn't stay. It has, the whole process has to be. Pre-made, basically. And so with that, if we through ordinance said, yeah, any of these businesses that are here, 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 and here, if they, if proprietor, proprietor decides to move, sell, do whatever, replace them if they wanna sell the business, needs to be relocated to something if he does.
Well, I think we did do that.
Yeah.
He probably wanted to build, put the car dealership.
Right. Well, we, did, did we do that through ordinance?
We didn't do the ordinance, we did it through the zoning.
Yeah.
Because it requires a special use.
Yeah.
Right, right, so that's what, doing this plan is part of the zoning that gives us the ability to by code move things out.
And I can tell you right now, on our special use applications, we have to reference, there's a section for referencing our comprehensive plan, if we can say no, because this is against our comprehensive plan. It's a findings effect.
Yeah.
Also, notice that our cemetery is a residential, is that normal?
Standard.
Okay.
They are residing there.
Oh, that's what I said.
Very great.
It's got a single person ready.
We marked the block or two from, from the, um, what would be the north side of the cemetery.
Across it, yeah.
To the neighborhood that's just north of there and just wrote invest. And it's a serious, uh, place.
Yeah. Yeah, it needs some look. Cause that's, that's random car dealer, you know, used car dealers and that kind of thing, and a gas station. So I think, you know, just as we, at, at one point, people said, okay, this area we want, at one point in time, we, we want this to be a culinary district. So that there's a definition of where, you know, people can, um, coalesce around that one vision, you know, keeping that out on twenty-five, you know, south of seventy-two, that, that would be kind of a, a goal. Yeah, and north of seventy-two, like just, you know, that, some of those areas north of the cemetery. Um, I know it's like where a fire station is and things like that.
The cemetery is not East Dundee though, is it? I mean, it's.
Well, it's township property, but it's still in East Dundee.
Well, it's not controlled by us like the way.
I thought it was in East Dundee, it's similar to. It's in East Dundee, it's similar to part of, um, uh, the golf course, I believe. In, in that it is in East Dundee, but it's operated by the township. Yeah.
Yeah, it's on your zoning map.
Yep. So. Or, or it's op, yeah, it's, golf course is operated by the township. Is that right, Frank?
Yeah, the, the park district annex, annex the golf course before I was on board, they're into the village of East Dundee.
So East Dundee owns the land, but the park district operates.
No, 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 the, the park district bought the golf course from Anuda Harms, from the Anuda Harms family with a nineteen ninety-two referendum that was drawn for the park district to acquire the property. The park district physically owns the real estate, but it falls within the zoning boundaries of the.
So East Dundee has no say or control.
Just through zoning.
All right. Uh, Nelson Harms, um, yeah, the property that would be. Behind the Emmanuel Lutheran School, which is all kind of wooded area right now.
Old DeAngelo.
Yeah. DeAngelo, even further, uh.
Up the hill from.
Up the hill from that, uh, we marked that as possibly, uh, coming up. Trails. Are we gonna set out for that, if it's just trees and this?
There are nice trails there.
Yeah, our trails would just be kind of a idea of, you know, preserving.
Yeah, it's, it's owned by the church, but.
It is owned by the church, I guess, but not, uh, something that they necessarily wanna own on its own.
Well, topography, if you've ever walked it, it's rough.
Well, that's why we wanna keep it a park.
Thank you.
It is a park with trails, so.
That would be like a, the ultra hiking park.
I mean, I'd like through there, it's, it's walkable, bikeable, like it is.
I mean, we're not talking.
There's a hill though.
Yeah. Um, and I think that it's living a lot of time, that's.
Very helpful, great idea.
Good job, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
The one in the middle?
Oh?
Yeah. Knock it over your handwriting.
Well, we'll start, we'll start where the other one left off. Uh, we had circled the entire DeAngelo property, which is now owned by the Emmanuel Lutheran Church, and we said to leave it a, either nature preserve or some type of a, a park use. Um, we also said to, uh, given the chance, uh, to take any of the remaining M-zone property that's in essentially our downtown district, whether it be the.
Yes.
I believe it is the Chicken Coop or the Lion Eyes Trucking and some of the stuff down around.
Definitely.
The Hager property and move it, uh, move it east of Route twenty-five and never to allow any manufacturing to exist west of Route twenty-five. Uh, we had said with regard to all of our residential districts, this one might be a little more difficult, that we never allow the, the existing zoning districts to change either up or down by one zoning class. So R-one could go to R-two or estate, uh, R-three could go to R-two or R-four. Um, and then, uh, the last, the, the big one here that we had was just that, as we look at the commercial corridors, whether it be Route twenty-five or Route seventy-two, and kind of to Scott's point is, how did the, the truck parking area that become R-one? Um, I mean, I believe that through the annexation agreement that we had with Palumbo, Andrew, and Plody, while they were in the county, they were, uh, they were essentially doing mining operations. And I believe that we should be able to go to those annexation agreements and see if they were given either time limits or whatever. Uh, some of them may have been as, as bold or as broad as saying, as long as they're doing some type of mining activity, they can continue to do that, but then once they stop, then it would revert to the underlying zone. But we'd have to look at those annexation agreements to see that. But our note was just that, that if we, wherever we have a commercial and industrial in the future, that we put our more than zoning for residential immediately up against it, cause it does make sense that we've got R-one budding up against manufacturing. I don't know who's gonna wanna put in a twenty thousand square foot residential lot with nice homes such as the reserve or that, abutting our manufacturing. So our R-five should go up against our commercial and industrial, and then as we progress away from that, we go from R-five to R-four to R-three to R-two to R-one, and then, uh, I don't know that we will ever do any more estate lots, but we've got the Lake River State Central that has the estate lots. That's the extent, thank you.
Frank, can I ask you what the logic was behind the idea of restricting classification up or down by one as far as zoning?
Just, just taking into account the existing neighborhoods that are there, I, I mean, obviously, if I, if somebody, if a developer were able to, to get a large buyout, say, I, I mean, I know he's not a favorite person in the village here, but, uh, Tom Roser had gone to areas of carpenters though, where there was very dense housing, and he bought out three hundred residents at one, one time. And he did it for a different reason, he did it cause he wanted, there were areas where there should have been homeowners associations and then weren't, and he bought it out to put in a homeowners association so that, because you, certain areas of the Morningside subdivision, you'd go and there would be a townhouse building with five different colors on it because there was no association. But, uh, I don't know that we, that we'll ever see a developer go in and try and buy two or three hundred people out.
And, and the idea being that only for any one change, like you could change it from one to one year, and then it could go again.
Right.
Next year, but for any one development, it can't skip.
Yeah.
Cause going down one, I can understand being able to go up one class, but being able to go down one would increase the requirement for square footage.
For land, yes.
Which may not.
May not be possible. May not be, but, but everybody that wasn't, that was in that would be grandfather, they wouldn't have tear their house down, or tear a house down somewhere, or, or land, they would just be not, uh, legally conforming.
Okay.
Right.
So you wanna talk about here, I'll talk about.
Go ahead, and don't forget that little tiny pink square where we're talking about annex.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And too, cause we didn't write a note next to it.
Right, I think, yeah, a lot of the things we talked about were already covered, I think, you know, we're definitely, we're here with the increased walkability up, um, from downtown up, uh, seventy-two and sixty-eight where it makes sense, especially linking businesses along this as being a, you know, an extended business corridor that has, has different types of opportunities than people looking for business in, in our downtown area. You know, there's different types of land, different modern, there'll be different standards that you can deal with. We had also talked about like these two, you know, islands of unincorporated in the middle of the town, especially this one, uh, looking to annex that and bring that into the, uh, into the village. Um, something I'm specifically interested in is making sure anything we do, uh, really considers the impact on the floodplain in this downtown area. Um, you know, uh, I, I live in this area, and we hear now a lot of the impacts of residents and looking to do developmental changes and the types of restrictions that are put on, on people trying to build, uh, or trying to do an addition. Uh, for example, you know, if you're, if you're a homeowner now, if you want to put an addition on your house, if you do more than fifty percent, uh, value change, it changes your flight insurance liability to a thing, to a level that would likely make it unportable to live here. Um, so I'm really thinking, you know, we shouldn't be having any plans with building big buildings down here. Um, I, I put in a couple of other things, uh, that I'll talk about for a little too, I guess, this one, last one. We talked about, um, I put out there, I didn't go and get any consensus with my team, but, uh, about getting a, a more consistent square in the downtown, uh, village central area. You know, we have very good job on the north end, but not as much on the south end, and you know, we'll see that get evolved and established and kind of locked in as a, you know, a full cookies of it, and then we have both, uh, I think we talked about with Gabriel and the M's, um, having residential up here in the, uh, the M's to the north, and then maybe down here or mixed use, you know, in, in the M's down here to the south. Same, same type of thing, as you guys want, no M's, we put in a couple other things to do with them, but really, no, no M's there. Uh, and then, um, Eric put in that the intersection needs to be straightened. You know, so that's the, uh, the Meyer, the River Street intersection, right, however we're gonna do that. Um, and then Jeff, I mean, I'll let you add a little bit more details on this, but, yeah, this is a huge amount of land, you know, that is the golf course, I know there's been talks on what we might wanna do with the golf course going forward, so having some synchronization.
Right now, the golf course is doing really well, um, it's crowded and everything, but five years ago, that wasn't the case, and so I was on the assumption that East Dundee, since it was in East Dundee, we still had arrangement with the park district whereby we own the land, but you guys were operating what was on top of it, so any changes to that should include the village of East Dundee at the table to say, hey, if you're gonna eighty-six half the golf course, we, we would wanna have a say in, in what happens to that. Um, you, you and I talked about the mining operation that could go through there, I mean, there's a whole lot of gravel under that ground, and it could turn East Dundee a very wealthy little community, uh, because of it, well, that's, you know.
Right next year is state area, and right next year, open space area.
You know, we might be able to, you know, suck in it with a burn or something.
That's a terrible idea, Jeff.
But, you know, I think what I'm saying is if we're gonna take an eighteen-hole golf course and turn it into a nine-hole, simply because of, of expense of running it an eighteen-hole golf course, then the village really should have a say in what was done, and I'm thinking that is just one of the possibilities. So, but I'm not sure that that is even relevant, given our, uh, given what Frank had said. But the other two things that we talked about too was, if you take a look at the southeast quadrant there from Commonwealth, all the way on the right side of the, the map, right down there, that's all Plody property, that number one shaped gray area, currently it resides in East Dundee, everything to the east of it, and just to, obviously, to the west of it is unincorporated King County. They have de-annexed everything, the Plo, the Plody company has de-annexed everything that they own that was off mini-states. So currently it's unincorporated King County again, which is cool, free Dundee, our agreement, our understanding with, with the neighboring community has been not to encroach, and they agreed the same, to do, not to do this, you know, to approach west. That arrangement now has been dissolved, and the village in the future, and not so distant future, would have the ability to annex all that, and Plody has agreed to do this. Uh, so what could become of that, cause we're talking, what, twenty-four, maybe twenty-five hundred square acres, which is a boatload of land that would essentially double the size of the town, uh, could for the next foreseeable generation, even beyond, completely change, uh, what East Dundee can offer.
What's the current usage, isn't that being mined right now?
No, 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 it's just one small little parcel, and they're never gonna bring that into the town, simply because we would immediately hit them with an extraction.
Is that where recycling is and all that?
Right, that's a smaller parcel that they've told us is gonna remain unincorporated, but everything around that, everything to the, to the south of it, everything to the west of it, uh, is currently unincorporated now, and, um, outside of the church and the Dessa, along Beverly Road, which would remain in, uh, for the states, everything else is available to future development for East Dundee. So it could really change for the next generation what, what the town is and offers. The other thing I wanted to mention was, and we sort of touched on it, but Erica's, uh, point to straightening out the intersection at South River and, and seventy-two would be the development possibilities from the river itself to South River on the south side, and from Water Street to South River on the north. Both of those little strips of downtown along seventy-two are kind of dismal, and, uh, are ripe for redevelopment, and, uh, so, um, we actually have right now possibilities that exist that will allow us to do that, so, um, we should look to that.
So.
And especially if we wanna create, uh, a presence on the south side of seventy-two, cause we're gonna be redeveloping Hager, if we pull that further north all the way to seventy-two. If we pull that further north, all the way to seventy-two, not, like I say, displacing anybody like Sarah had mentioned, but down the road, it's something to consider.
So that's one of the things that I was noticing in all, everybody's comments, is nobody's really, there's, there's spaces that might not be developed, and they've all been either identified as parks. But where do we, do we, A, do we feel like there, I'm sorry if I'm moderating now, but I had a question. I realize I was doing that. Is, do we feel like there is a need to identify more spaces or set aside more spaces for rooftops? Because that is part of what limits us from being able to attack, attract a grocery store or some other retail, not, and I don't ever, I don't even think if we were to add more, that we would still be able to do it when you compare it to Randall Road or other areas. But, you know, what do we think about that, or where are the opportunities there?
I don't think we said on ours we put it in parks.
Mm-hmm. No, yeah.
Yeah, this was all development here, so.
But residential?
All right, we said not.
Residential.
We said residential mixed-use business.
Okay.
Okay.
If you can think. I definitely not parks in these areas.
So like where Lion Eyes is?
Yeah.
That could be a.
Yes.
Residential?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
But if you think about it, the, the part north of three eleven on Barrington, Hager, and whatever we're able to squeeze in on the Doverline site would probably be, well, it's about ten acres on the north, eight on Hager, and then two here in the middle of the downtown. We're not, I don't know if we're able to put in that small amount of space, the number of houses would, that would be necessary to attract immediately.
Yeah, and that's what I'm.
A grocery store. But certainly with, with Plody's, I mean, that's twenty-five hundred acres. So who knows what could happen?
I have a strong desire to maintain the small-town feel that we have. I have a very strong desire to keep the soul of this town what it is. You know, I don't wanna have huge development, you know, anywhere, to be honest. Like some small two-level apartments, maybe something like that, maybe out on along twenty-five, things like that. But there's just, it's a small town. A lot of us moved here and have, or families have stayed here because it's a small town.
Right.
And I don't want it to suddenly become a suburb.
Well, I, I, when you say that, do you consider aesthetics to be part of a, a small-town feel?
To a certain extent, but I also consider headcount. Like, I.
You're talking density.
I'm talking, I'm talking density, I'm talking population density, I'm talking, you know, if we really want manufacturing to kind of stay, like businesses, well, mostly manufacturing, to really stay out on twenty-five, out east of twenty-five, then let's commit to that. You know, let's make that kind of part of what we, what we look at out there. I don't know, I would have a hard time saying, let's build a huge residential development out east. Like, like, like just single-family homes, a new neighborhood, a subdivision. Right? Nothing in this town feels like you live in a subdivision. And I, the thought of that is sort of like, that's not what this town is. It just doesn't feel right to me.
Well, and not only that, but I think that we think about how we fund our government. A large, single-family subdivision out, way out on Beverly is going to, I think, cost more to this municipality than it earns, since, you know, the police collect a lot of property taxes.
Residential never pays your stuff, rarely.
Well, not, it would have to be, it would have to be more density than, than a single family in order to fund it stuff. But I think what we should, I like the idea of behind Barrington, you know, mixed use back there, mixed use maybe at Hager or, you know, residential, either one.
Realized one.
At, at the Hager, and, you know, I think that's where we gain our residences, personally. But I, I would be, I would be willing to explore whatever, you know, comes of that land, if it does make sense to.
On the north of Barrington?
No, I'm saying what you're saying, with that annexation.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm open to hearing any proposals for it.
Yeah.
I just, I guess I'm skeptical of like a traditional subdivision development that, I think that, you know, those are a big drain on municipality.
Yeah, and I think we would, I don't wanna say we'd be a diversity of people who own the land, but they're gonna have a big say in how they wanna develop it. You know, so I mean, my guess is that.
Well, how does that work when you annex land? Annex land, how does it come in zoned?
It's a negotiation.
Yeah, do we set that up as, as what we want it to be? Or how, I mean, if it's already.
It's, it's a question of which comes first, children. Like the last one we annexed.
My personal history of bringing land into a village and having its own was based on what, what the developer thought that they could make money in doing. So that they would land outside of here, like if Dave Plody really want, is it Dave or Dan? Dan or Dave? If anybody from the Plody family wanted to bring that land into the village of East Dundee, they would probably wanna bring it in because they're looking to develop it, and they want your services. They want your police, they want your fire, they want your water, water.
It's what East Dundee did for us.
What's that?
It's what East Dundee did for us.
Well, what can East Dundee, but also, they're gonna have some idea of how they're gonna develop.
Yeah, oftentimes, if, if you're annexing a property and they have a development plan in mind, you kinda know what the zoning is gonna be or should be. But if you don't really know that, it's usually the lowest zoning.
Well, usually automatically it'll come in rural residential, but then there'll be a request for rezoning that is made pretty, immediately upon annexation, that there will be rezoning to some higher density.
So the comp plan, I mean, if you say you want a certain type of developments or commercial uses and so forth to be located or isolated, if you will, in one area of the town, and you put that, and you document it, that's like, from a legal standpoint, if someone were to come in and challenge it, I guess what I'm wondering is how much backing or strength does that give the village having documented it? Because it's really, it can be tossed, is what I'm wondering.
Well, the comp plan is not a legal, legally binding document. It's an advisory document. But your zoning ordinance and your updating your zoning code, you want your zoning code to be in compliance with the comp plan, and that is your legal document. So by taking that next step, that's how you enforce your comprehensive plan. And then, of course, if there's any requests for changes or that sort of thing, then, as was mentioned earlier, one of the findings of fact is whether or not it complies with what is in the comprehensive plan, and that's an opportunity also to say, no, it doesn't, or, or yes, it does. So it does make a difference. There are, there are ways to make it a, a real action tool, rather than just a report.
The two thousand and ten change, or actually happened in oh nine, but I think it was finally adopted in ten, was by Vanderwald when they set down, I think you were on board, Jeff.
I won't just.
I think you may have been.
In and out.
Well, but it was to, it was to redevelop the downtown into kind of what it is now. So they thought that there was enough of a change there that it, it, it ended up creating an amendment to the two thousand and two plan.
Yeah, we, we definitely had discussions of PNC on how we like our zoning ordinances changed and cleaned up, and we could really move them to then match this.
Well, and strengthen it, is what I'm wondering too. Because if any future board or any future commission, well, obviously you have the say over it now. I can say this isn't legally binding stuff, but we're putting a lot of money and a lot of time into this, and we wanna kind of adhere to it. So what I, I fear is that down the road, and I think there's no way to combat this, but that it just gets dismissed based on current climate.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's why it's twenty years since the last one. They've never doing it. I mean, that's the point of the whole thing. Towns change, we grow, we, you know, rules change, we have a.
And there was probably the same sentence back then, but you don't know what the future's gonna hold.
Correct.
So all we can do is the best that we can and provide the vision for them, for, you know, future people.
I can't say, I can't say right now, the way that the, the comp plan is right now, it's really not helpful for us at all in, in PNC. I mean, if you look at every single one of our approvals, it's the exact same line out of the comp plan, which is like to the betterment of the residents and businesses of East Dundee. You know, that's like all we can fall back on now. So I'm, I'm, from what I'm hearing, I think we're gonna have a bit more detail out of this one than we have in that one. You know, for example, like the whole twenty-five seventy-two and the original one just talks about dominance. It's like our only, you know, east side development discussion is like making a grocery store, having that, that there. So like, it's like, nothing else. No, no other businesses are considered, it's all totally open. So hopefully we'll have more detail, more guidelines, you know. And, 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 yeah, maybe in twenty years, everything will be different, and we'll have to, you know, the board will have to do it again.
Well, it kind of needs to, it's, that's the point. Can I just, I wanna throw one thing out there, because there was a, I think everybody else brought this up, or you guys brought it up, I just wanna make sure, I think, we all missed it. We flagged three different intersections to fix along seventy-two. Water, River, and Van Buren. So that's what the crazy little three lines are. Just for anybody who's looking at that later, safety.
Oh, pedestrians and bikers.
And cars.
And cars pulling out are all safety issues.
Yes.
And the, the width of seventy-two, those sidewalks are skinny. You're like a building, and the car's going by you, it's not a lot of space.
Yeah. The straightening of the intersection is what made me remember that we flagged that.
Yeah, I think that's key. You know, it's really unfortunate too, because the way the, the bridge is oriented, if you're gonna make a right off of water to go into West Dundee, that's not exactly the easiest maneuver. We eliminate the possibility of a left turn.
Well, you should see the number of people on a weekly basis who make a left-hand turn there.
Yeah, I know, they break the law.
Oh, yeah. And some of them are semis, which there are, has semis now that it's not technically supposed to have trucks on it, but there are still semis.
If we're able to implement the park land for the riverfront, that should cut down a lot of people going down Water Street.
That's the hope.
From carpenters.
Yes, it will, and certainly it'll slow it down.
And that would, that would help that intersection quite a bit, I would think.
Because I've seen trucks do it, the, the big rigs coming down Water, and oh my God.
Well, not anymore. It should not be more.
They shouldn't be anymore.
No, they shouldn't be, but I still see them.
Not anymore.
It's very wide in the, in the downtown traffic, waiting to do that right turn.
There, there was talk a while ago about a development on Water Street that would have closed Water Street. I think that maybe that wasn't a good idea, but I would be wondering if it wouldn't be a bad idea to make that, you know, one-way going away from Route seventy-two. So you could still turn onto it, but you can't come down from.
Ooh, I love it.
So here's, here's what I will say as somebody who lives in that neighborhood. That's fine if you fix the other intersections, so I can actually leave town.
That's great to get home, but how do you?
Yeah, I mean, it's perfectly fine if I wanna get home, but right now, I can't get into West Dundee. I can't drive into West Dundee because River Street, it's summer, so it's Dairy Queen Line.
You gotta go over Copper.
And then, and then Van Buren, and then I have to go up to Van Buren to where I can't make a right-hand turn on red, and then I have to go through multiple lights in order to cross the river. So if we fix the others, it's a consideration. I like it for, for safety, but.
North Saturday's got.
I know, we're so problematic, we've got the floodplain, so it's a problem up there.
We have a lot of problems on North Saturday.
This is a great discussion. Thanks for all the comments that you provided, and hope you have all of our cards. So if you wanna continue with the discussion, you email us. Go to the website and use that online map to continue putting comments. It's a really great way to do this digitally and share those comments as well.
So if anybody wanted to, I don't know if anybody's had any, but you contact them to take part in the survey. That's closed, so what I don't wanna do is back things up for you, but if someone were to contact one of us and say, hey, can I offer something?
Oh, I had talked to people.
Regent or something, I would say.
Yeah, direct to you.
That, that bubble type of opportunity for comment, you know, be the only, okay.
If anybody wants to email either of us directly too, that's fine. If somebody, you know, that's not unusual, that there's somebody who has, especially if they have some lengthy, you know, more than you wanna put in a little bubble on map or whatever. We've gotten three pages, you know, I have from a resident.
I have people come to me and we're communicating with a printout book.
Yeah, all their concerns, and, yeah, so they, they're welcome to submit them directly to us.
But I know a ton of people who took the survey. I had a ton of people reach out about it. I mean, it was a little, everybody said it took a little bit longer than they expected, but, and that's to be expected. It's like, it needs a lot of information, but, and a lot of people asked about the survey. I know took it for the month it was open, and, yeah, the task force email that went out this week about the date when it's gonna be scheduled and all that kind of stuff. It's funny, I recognized a couple email addresses from people who were asking about the survey.
Oh, good.
I'm like, oh, good, they wanted everyone to participate in the task force.
So on a timeline, start to finish, where are we as far as completion of the document?
I forget what we said when, when we would wrap this.
Thirty percent?
Beginning to end is your midnight to twelve months when we started.
Well, we did the survey in April, we probably started in March, so maybe look in next spring to wrap it all up.
It'll be a year from now.
Your document will probably be ready early twenty, like quarter one, twenty twenty.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, you gotta.
They have those nice little things on the website, like to show the progress.
Yeah, you can track that. I don't think it doesn't have a timeline, but does have the process for markers.
Yeah, it doesn't have the actual dates.
Like you have the little markers on the, like, not with dates, but like, I love that.
There's also the review process can be quite time consuming, because we'll do a draft, the planning, the staff will review it first with any comments they have. The, then the task force will have a chance to read it, and then the planning commission will get it, and you guys may get it too for an informal read-through, but then there has to be a public hearing. And the public hearing can be very quick, or the public hearing, we've been at both extremes, you know? Nobody, everybody loves it, and ten minutes of comments, and they vote, and it's approved and all that. And other communities have had three or four nights worth of public hearing, because the room is full and a lot of people have stuff to say. So how long the review process really varies a lot. We'll have our work done in the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, but then it can kick around for a while or move quickly.
So how much change do you usually see from what you guys write to what actually gets approved?
Not a lot. There are exceptions. There is one community in particular, I'll think about that, the one that had many nights of public hearing, where there, there were some, some significant changes, not huge, but some. But for the most part, not a lot, because there's been a lot of review beforehand, there's been a lot of input. We don't want it to get to the point where we're at the public hearing and whole sections have to be rewritten. That's, that's not, that's not helpful. So we take all your comments upfront seriously and get it as close as we can.
Erica, one thing that might be informative to this comprehensive plan, I, I was looking and found this group that called Urban Three. And what they do is they take a, a map of your, of your village, and per acre, they measure how much money it generates in taxes.
Oh, I've seen those maps, aren't they cool?
Yeah.
Really cool.
And how much it costs you. And so it's like either above ground or below ground for the whole village. And I think that would be interesting to see for East Dundee. I tried to reach out to them, I don't know if it's just because I'm not important enough. I talked to them, they didn't respond, so maybe.
Can you check into it? Is there a cost associated with this?
I don't know, because they didn't, they didn't respond.
Eric is gonna, she's on. You will call me back.
Yeah, it's very cool.
Will you meet with all of the large property owners and/or the unincorporated properties beyond our current boundaries?
If, if you want us to meet with them, yeah, we can definitely set up a timer, have them participate. And have them, and so.
Okay, 'cause I, I just know that twenty-two years ago, TESCA made some broad assumptions of the Plody property south of Route seventy-two. And they essentially said, all that's gonna come in as residential and, and things of that nature, only to find out that Plody has about a hundred and fifty.
only to find out that Plody has about a hundred and fifty years of mining gravel left on the property. So a lot of, a lot of assumptions are made and like Jeff, you said, Dave wants to come into East Dundee, I can believe he wants to come into East Dundee because we're probably easier to deal with than off of Minnesota State. However, if they haven't mined the property yet, an acre of property with gravel under it's probably worth a hundred to a hundred and fifty million dollars in what they can mine out of it and sell, sell forward. So my guess would be is they would not bring stuff in. I mean, they're not gonna get a mining permit to go right up against Beverly Road, but they would probably wanna mine the property before they.
Well, how far towards Beverly, how far west, east rather, do you suppose that mining is relevant, I mean, before it thins out?
I think, it would be, they're gonna try and get it, go through the county. And if they, if they don't get, if the county doesn't give them what they want, then they may bring it to you. But they're not, I don't think they're gonna bring it to East Dundee to initially develop it. They're gonna bring it to East Dundee to protect or mine, but.
Which you'd be okay by me, because if we were to get like, say, a twenty-five cent extraction tax per ton, we would have.
I would, I would, I would hope you'd get more than that, because when we, when I did it with, when I did it with Carpentersville in nineteen eighty-three, Carpentersville got from Meyer Material three dollars a ton.
Three?
Yeah, yeah, Carpentersville was bringing in between two and three billion dollars a month.
Oh, well, then we could even afford a raise for our trust.
Is that for the Silverstone, that Silverstone building?
Silverstone, yeah.
Thirty dollars a median?
So, so if you, if you have people that, as we said before, that you think we need to talk to, could you please get that contact information to Franco and he can send it on to us so that we know exactly, because lots of times it's hard to get to the right person?
Absolutely. And I, you know, I know that we said this earlier about making sure that the website is clear and all of that. I think it's just, we wanna make sure the community stays engaged. I'm so excited about the number of people who signed up for the task force and, you know, I know it's just a button at the end of the survey, but I'm still excited that a lot of people clicked it. But I think as this process continues, we wanna make sure the residents feel informed about it the whole way. And I know we do a lot of pushes on Facebook and a lot of pushes like we did for the survey, we did for all this stuff, you know, lots of email pushes, lots of Facebook pushes. If we need to do some, like, Little Bay at the Depot or some physical thing for the folks who never go on or never check their emails.
Would it make sense to do it like at one down?
At the event, at the event.
We have markets on Saturday and Sunday.
It's a good idea.
So do we have?
It's a good idea, I like that.
Do we have like a little bike old liar that we stick out, you know? Even just directing people to the website. Like, I think that would be really, like, hey, we're doing this. Even if you didn't fill out the survey, make sure you stay informed. Here are ways that you can communicate, here's ways that you can, you know, let us know what you're thinking, go to the website, email, call a trustee, like, whatever.
And I, and, you know, I know, I'm not on Facebook, but I try to take everything that comes from, or certain things, that come from those biweekly emails, depot newsletters and put it on Nextdoor, put links to it on Nextdoor for the people that also aren't on that, and a lot of neighbors.
Yeah, so do you anticipate between now and next year of this being done, another form like this?
With you folks?
Yeah.
That is really, we are very open to doing that if that's the way you want to keep informed, yes. We, we did have that in mind that we would be coming back to you. When the task force has come to some conclusions and preliminary recommendations, that that would be a good time to get your input on those, get some initial reactions?
It allows to, you know, input tweak it somehow, you know, whatever.
Right, and then, yeah.
A lovely idea of having the two, you know, two organizations together.
Yeah, you're the folks, first folks that have combined this and not have it, you know, just be just one or just the other, so that's, it worked one way.
Nothing is not innovative.
Okay, I, I was taking notes as you were all just talking, so that was great. Got a lot of issues that way. And any, any last comments?
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you, it's been awesome. Thank you for all your great input.
Thank you.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Precious, precious.